A little disappointed at the crowd size.
Yeah.
Go from a full house to this.
I'm surprised with this.
I had such a good time last time.
Like when you're born, you're destined to be.
I call this special city council meeting August, September the fifteenth, two thousand twenty five order. Please rise, say the pleasure, and they just remain standing as we tear open the curtain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Lord, we come to you tonight and ask for your wisdom and guidance upon the council that we do those things which are right and good for the citizens of Olney and for our future. We also ask that you do with all of our citizens and all of our workers and protect them in the wheat to come with Christ. Okay?
Amen.
Just hold the roll, please.
Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Farenbacher.
Here.
Councilwoman Icorst.
Present.
Councilman Iron.
Present.
Mayor Lambert.
Here. So I'm on the agenda of public comments and presentations. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussions. Plan for improvements of downtown Olney project funded by the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant through IDOT. Mr. Frederick.
In fall of two thousand twenty three, the city tried to night that night for Whittle, Main Street, and Will, Spoonscape. In April of two thousand twenty three, it was awarded approximately a two point nine million dollar project. Main Street from Walnut to Boone and Whittle from Main to Elm. It consists of new sidewalks, removing and replacing all the poles. Not replacing all the poles, removing all the poles and replacing some of the poles. Utility relocation. Some new poles and lights, ADA ramps, benches, planters, and trash receptacles. Those are the items that were included in the grant application. At this point, we have cleared the first steps in environmental review. We've been given biological clearance and cultural clearance. So at this point, we start the public information part of the project. This, that's what this meeting, first meeting is about. To get comments and suggestions from the city council for the project. There's a, I think everybody has a map or up there, shows the location of it. I handed out some things. Just examples of what's possible. On Main Street between Walnut and Boone, well Walnut and Fair. We show some curb turnouts at the intersections. And I have a picture of something similar to that. It can be something planted, which would require maintenance. Or it could be something that does not require maintenance. Concretes, half concrete, something like that.
That gonna be a little bit of pain on the butt for pushing snow? Gonna get ran over and cracked?
Could probably get hit.
It's expensive.
It also showed a removing sidewalk, their papers on Main Street. One of the requirements that IDOT has, we have to document, if we're gonna replace it with concrete, we have to document that it has been in there at least twenty years. And Tyler popped a Tom Coker today, he thinks it was done in the midnights, ninety five. It's probably been in there thirty years, but we will have to have documentation. Something that. City council minutes or something, that it was done more than twenty years ago. Or if we can't, it'll have to go back in papers. I handed out some examples of spanned concrete for the sidewalk. There's several ways to dispan it, it can be colored. Which makes it look like their papers.
Is that more economical?
I'm sure it would be.
I would think it would be.
What is the slide?
The layers were involved in the individual papers.
How does this sound better up on it that's got a lot of texture?
It, if it's got a dark color to it, it shouldn't be bad.
I just wondered if the race.
It might, it might. I don't think it'd be much worse than what it is now. Really? It would, it would probably, because it would be concrete, it's probably gonna not, you know, existing papers are the kind of way we've lost it.
They've lost their plane.
If it's concrete, it's gonna not do that.
And life expectancy of concrete versus. Don't know?
I mean, years.
Beyond us.
It means something added to traffic on it. It will free, freestyle work, obviously.
So I guess the first question, so what, what do our utilities look like in this area that we're going to be doing? How's water, Brandon's here? And the mains dip from Boone to Walnut and from Main to Elm. So we're good there? So we probably need to do something about it before. Yeah, one right at the intersection. Said one right at the intersection. Has it, how long, where's it go? How long would it take?
From Main Street, it turns into Redwood.
Oh, so it's a north-south line? So it completely needs replaced?
Oh, yeah.
Gotcha. I thought it was a, I thought it dissected.
No, no, no.
Down at Elm, we've got the one that goes across.
I think it turns into six and on part of Elm, it turns into four.
Is that on the list of things to be replaced in the future?
I've added from Redwood to the road. Don't start on that, if you like Ridgeway, Desrell, I don't know. Then you have that, so this is pretty much done.
So, Mike, so would that affect the sidewalk portion of this project?
I think it's out in the street, isn't it?
Well, I meant any of that, I mean, would there be any connections that need to be remade and have to do anything different?
I think all of it is out in the street. I don't, I don't believe it would affect the sidewalk.
No, everything's in the street.
So we don't necessarily have to worry about replacing that line until we redo Whittle?
I think that, that would be right.
So now then, there are some, there's some water things out in the sidewalk on Main.
Curve stops.
Yeah.
Would have to be adjusted to match the new sidewalk.
So that's the only thing there?
Right.
Water wise?
Same thing off Whittle too.
Yeah.
Sure, tops of the sidewalk.
Storm sewer and sewer down Whittle? Does any of that might have to be worked on?
At each, at each intersection, it may. So we're gonna be redoing all the ramps.
Yeah.
All the ADA ramps. It may take, it may take some work at the intersections.
So as we redo all those ADA ramps, do we need to take into consideration what we're going to do in the future with storm sewer coming down Whittle? And does it need to be replaced? We don't think it does, right?
No, we need the, the ADA, ADA ramps take precedence.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
Right.
Are you, is going to eventually affect the, where the storm rates are, probably?
Right.
I'm just saying.
Well, yeah, we would have to take that into account.
Yeah.
And get the ramps in the ramp, or get, allow for the, the storm sewer ramps.
So what kind of, what kind of, how do we believe the storm sewer to be down Whittle? We believe that it's more stable than Main, correct?
Yeah. It's what I've seen of it, it's all brick.
But we don't have very many manholes, so it's hard to see, right?
The only one we have is the barber shop and then just after the railroad tracks and then all the way down. And we can't get, coming south, we can't get past State Hall, because there's a, there's a fiber line board through.
Do we know who it is?
No, I don't know that we want to mess with it. I don't know why I want to dig around it.
Damn or us? Or either?
Normally that bricks about like a diamond, and once you move one, they start to fall. I don't think Jeff can make it all the way this way. We can run as far as what we can, there's, from what I've seen on, there's supposed to be a break somewhere around Elm Street, but.
I guess the only thing I'm saying about being any ramps down here is I would hate for us to fix them. And then come in and have to redo them in ten, in five, two, three, or four years, whenever we redo Whittle.
Yeah, we take that into account. And speaking of ADA, we'll be required to put ADA parking spaces, ADA compliant parking spaces on Main Street and Whittle. I believe that there are, there is one ADA space on Main Street now, but it is not ADA compliant. So there'll be a total of twenty eight spaces on Main Street that are, so that would require two ADA.
One here, one here.
No, on what, on Main Street.
To one main.
Two on Main Street. And they would have to be, Main Street's gonna be tough because, I think I handed out a drawing of an ADA parking.
Yeah.
It's on tape, it's on tape there. You have to have the cutout, five foot, on parallel parking, take the five foot cutout. I believe that the width of the sidewalk on Main Street is wide enough that you would have to do that. Exactly. Question is, where do we, where are we gonna put it? If we, if we just put it at the end of the block, we wouldn't have to, that would second tape, that would sell.
Well, I suppose you would want a handicapped dog by the.
The I, the I center and probably by the senior citizen center, right? Wouldn't that be right together?
By the I center, we, we could probably do that.
Where's the other, so where's the other place on Main? I mean, you know, the senior citizens has parking in the back, that's probably easier, that's where all those people park.
There's no parking there in front of them. Parking in front of senior citizens.
There's, there's an empty lot on Main Street, on the south side. Which it might work out, because we're gonna, we're gonna be taking up five feet of the sidewalk. They just have to think about, we're gonna figure out where, on Main Street, we're gonna go. On Whittle, there are sixty one spaces in the area we're talking about. There is one ADA down by the bank, it also is not ADA, it's not compliant. It will require three ADA spaces. One obvious place, I, I think would be the post office. There are two spaces in the parking lot out here already. I thought about, I thought about one right here by City Hall, but there are two spaces there. This one would be good too, but this is gonna be a challenge right here. The ADA sidewalk to get to the front door is gonna be a challenge regardless. And I don't know if adding a parking, ADA parking space there is working on. So the post office will probably be a good one, we gotta put two more in.
It's gonna probably somewhere down here on the north end.
Yeah, angled, angled parking, ADA spaces, you cannot share the access aisle. So we'll have to have two ramps, two individual ramps coming up the street for that, so.
So you wanna stay with, parallel?
Well.
I mean, you wanna stay with.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna stay with parallel, they're all gonna be on the east side. It'd probably be good to have an ADA space on the west side. So we have to, just have to figure out maybe. I'm gonna say, remember. Bauer Park. Over here, Bauer Park is what they call a four F property. When we have an actual informational meeting, we will have to have, we will have to have a meeting just for Bauer Park. The criteria to be a four F property, it must be publicly owned, it must be open to the public, its major purpose must be for a park, it must be significant as a park. So they, they have designated that as a four F property. What we'll have to do, it, we will not change anything, we cannot impact it at all as part of this project. It will have to be, you have to maintain access to it at all times. Now, there will be times when you're not gonna be able to get to it off of money. Be able to get to it off of. So I think, I think that'll be, that'll be okay. It's just, it's really thing to change it at all.
And Mike, what did you set, figure on the side of this building out here, anything?
Not, not.
Kind of dipped there, I don't.
On the east, going east?
Right here, yeah. Chestnut, no.
That's gonna depend on what we kinda do to get to the front door. There are gonna be a lot, there are gonna be, I don't know, ramps, you may have to go around that way to get a ramp up to the front door. There will be other ramps that have been built to get to the front door on Main and Whittle. There's a couple on Main, most of them are Whittle, right across the street here, down old Ken's Barber Shop, takes some ramps. The old Trust Bank Building, they'll take a ramp. It'll just be part of the sidewalk.
Did we ever figure out what was going on there at Trust Bank? The old Trust Bank Building out on the corner with the sidewalk, when it was even up?
Subsidized, cracked there in the corner.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
It was pushing up there, I don't know if somebody.
Somebody passed you.
Brandon, we, we passed you, I don't know what's going on.
Three, four inches, man, it was really, pretty, pretty deep.
Yeah, I mean, if there was some type of movement there, and I don't know what it was.
Something around the corner.
Yeah, I mean, it was right there at the corner.
Hey, Mike, on those ADA, the parking spots, can we, can we go around the corner and not actually be on Main? Can we put one on like Fair?
Have to find out. I would doubt it. That coordination meeting we went to, I looked back at the minutes.
I'll remember us.
And, and it pretty well says, I'll have to have ADA parking spaces on this.
Actually on the, I couldn't remember if it's actually on the route, if we could go just around the corner.
I wouldn't plan on it, I wouldn't count on it. It'd be good if I work out the places, but yeah, probably not. There, there will be a public information meeting, publish, add, republish in the paper. Public comments, there'll also be public comments, will have to be made available on website for period. And all those comments, they'll be taken into account. I think that's all I have, anything else?
So when will we begin to discuss the design and everything?
Yeah, that's it.
I'm not, I'm not super thrilled about giving some of the poles and leading some of the poles. I think especially in this downtown corridor, I don't really care outside of this, but I think it should have a unified and updated look.
I would agree.
That, you know, changes what we have now, I mean, I just don't want it to look like it did before we did it. I think that would be counterproductive to what we're trying to do.
Yeah, one, one of the goals was to, to get the power on and send it around.
Yeah, well, I'm just talking about even the posts and, and designs of everything down through their poles and.
Oh, yeah. In my head, those are just generic poles.
Tapered poles.
You can get all kinds of poles, you can get aluminum, aluminum square, steel square.
Yeah.
Or metal, whatever.
But maybe would you want something like that, to walk the trail, that type?
I mean, I think that looks a little modern to me, I think it's not gonna look fancier.
Something maybe fluted or something a little more.
Yeah, that's, my, my opinion is it should look like, I, it should, I'd like it to look a little bit, bit of G and O.
Too inconsistent, I mean, I think that they're a very prominent feature when you come into town, depending on the lighting you're talking with, it really sets a tone.
Like I said, I understand we're not probably gonna do that all the way down Main Street, but in that, those two blocks, these five blocks, we're gonna redo it. I'd like it to, you know, kinda know that you're in downtown.
It's already courthouse.
Yeah, probably be about ideally include that in, but we could do that just out of business district funding, just to keep the.
Consistent to you.
Just keep the overall theme of the, because it's outside of, the bounds, right?
See, there's a light, there's a light, I believe in front of courthouse.
In there, a receptacle amount of power.
And that is not, that light is not a key difference.
And we probably would be, we could add it, that would be, yeah. And because eventually, I've always wanted the Elks, I, I would like to see us do a bunch of flags across the front of that parking lot eventually someday. American flags everywhere.
Include courthouse, I mean, it's only the most prominent building downtown.
But I think there's some groups that would be interested in that.
So as far as the, the poles, on Main Street, well, there's poles on both sides. This, what, what this project is set up to do is not replace anything on the north side.
Oh, I think they have to be replaced then. I mean, whether, I mean, but you mean this project is to include that so we can't use the two million?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, we have it in there to, to replace poles.
I'd say those poles, those are, they're terrible looking.
Replace all the poles or replace just the poles on the south?
Replace the two light poles on the south.
Just those? Then in my mind, if that's all we're done, you probably wanna kinda match ones on the north, don't you?
You'd wanna do it.
They can take, they're gonna be removed.
Gone, gone.
That, that's what I said.
I think there should be some type of at least street lamp on that side to illuminate the sidewalk though. Gets pretty dark down there, I mean, we hope that if we do this, maybe there'll be more business late.
It's all it is to make downtown more attractive. There's a fluted pole, and essentially like Casey, I don't know, again, it's more maintenance for park or somebody, or maybe we could, to, to, if we put baskets up to have, see if they were maintained either by. A group, FFA or F four H or somebody, or even the store owner in front might have, take pride in that basket. Driving to Casey, it looks very attractive in some.
You know, they have a side by side the water truck and they go, they're there in water, remember?
Yeah, St. Marie too.
Somebody, somebody does it.
They have flowers too.
Mike, it's a street light pole on both sides, just something to do that, uh, vintage look of the.
Well.
What, what dictates that for the IDOT?
Well, if, if you're wanting to win this look, the lights at the top, you want it like a globe and that kind of thing? That, that's not, you know, that's not gonna get out as much light as the LED.
Well, I know for the street light.
Figure street light.
But I mean, I think they do make some fancier streetlights that would look, I mean, that would kinda match that.
Sure.
But I think you could also have like the old lights that used to have downtown that would kinda be more illuminating to the sidewalk area.
We could get, I don't know how many suppliers you have in the gap, Effingham, you use him quite a bit.
Yeah, I can't think of the name. They're looking for suppliers like that.
That's where we got our park lights from, and I think that's where Tom gets a lot of his lights.
Just thinking about the globe, they yellow pretty bad, pretty quick.
Yeah.
We struggle up and down these subdivisions with them.
But those are plastic, right?
Yeah, ours are a polycarbonate.
I mean, surely we could get glass, couldn't we?
Whatever fixture I'd, I'd like to see it be shielded and downcast.
Well, you know, you know what you gotta do, you have to have Justin go nip that butt.
I don't know if you can incorporate something vintage and yet downcast. I mean, we had old, you know, the old corrugated round porcelain reflectors we had in the street lamps as kids, you know? It's just a incandescent that you throw rocks at, yeah. Those are vintage and downcast.
Would you continue the same poles the rest of the way whenever the other ones get busted?
Now, I think you'll get the concrete ones once you get outside of that downtown area, right?
They are getting extremely expensive.
Well, then maybe we go, I mean, if it's gonna be cheaper to get the other ones.
Four thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, it's forty two hundred for the last one that we bought.
Four grand for that thing.
So what would your, I mean, so do we go to aluminum then or something?
Yeah, that's why.
I mean, it doesn't have, I don't know that outside of that area, it has to be decorative in my mind, outside of this downtown area.
Now, the one thing that, that these poles that we're probably gonna get are gonna have to have a concrete foundation, a concrete base. The poles that.
You just said.
That Tyler uses them now, it's not, they're just setting the ground.
They're just setting the ground pretty good, four foot.
So if you're gonna replace his, which I think would be good, it's not gonna, you're not gonna pull it out and put a new one in, you're gonna pull it out and build a concrete base and then put a new pole in.
I'm just saying, if you guys want the look to continue, think about what you do, so when those get hit.
Well, like I said, I don't know that, I don't know that it necessarily matters out away from this downtown area, I don't think it has to be the same necessarily as that. Because I suspect these are gonna be more expensive than what we might wanna do in these other places.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know, the concrete poles are what, forty two, forty two dollars?
Two hundred.
Why'd they went up so much? Fewer people use them?
They gotta make them, special make them, they don't just stop that one. And then the freight to get them here, shit is crazy.
Where they come from?
Nebraska area, it's just right.
It's a long ways.
And you, you got, we always share, like I wait three months or better to get them, because I'll just wait to share freight. I'll just have them bring me my pole, I just don't wait until they get a truck.
So if we bought more, do they get cheaper?
I don't know, I probably just keep one around and that's it.
I mean, but if you could buy ten for half price.
They're just gonna sit there, I mean, if you lose one up here.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, I, I don't know. Of course, I guess we can sell them to people around here that use them too.
So is that the kind of pole, more, more of vintage?
I mean, I, I personally think that would look.
I would, I would like to be attractive and have a.
Along within a street sign, post that look like that too, at least in that heart of downtown.
And what about the base, you know, the, the, the poles that I showed them in the drawing, they just go straight down. You can get the decorative base, you know, it goes out, it's fancy base, is that the kind you're looking for?
Yeah, I personally, I would like.
How tall will the pedestal be that these are mounted for? Are they gonna be up four inches, eight, I mean, are they gonna be a very.
You mean that, that fancy base?
No, just the, the pedestal that has to be poured.
It's just gonna be right by the sidewalk.
Whatever flanges at the bottom, they're gonna have some sort of collar that probably drops over the bolt heads, aren't they?
It would just be a cover, go to the bolts.
Yeah. Little feet, like, yeah, yeah.
But you can also get those, you know, the fancy things that come up far.
Cost difference.
This is all about budget too, so we gotta try to stay within that.
It's gonna be quite a bit more especially, most of the poles are like that, real fancy, are, are more for sidewalk. They're, they're not as tall, we're talking about twenty five foot poles, you know, for street lights. And that kind of pole maybe probably will be more expensive to do that. Because they're, those are mainly made for just a, a globe on top.
Our other option then is just a tapered aluminum pole, in, in a bronze or a steel, I mean, some of it.
Which will want me to steal, that'd be plain, be plain.
I guess we need to see the pricing.
Right, okay. Planters, there's the hanging baskets. I also got several items in there on.
I think they're attractive, I think you could have people maintain them, but I also know when we had the, just the concrete, you know, tiles on end filled and the, asking the store owners to maintain them, they, they really didn't get maintained.
Some are better than others, I'm sure.
There are some other planters in there, I think there's some of them are made out of, some are concretes, some of them are reinforced plastic. Planters. Used to be.
They used to be a lot of those.
Planters you're looking for.
What?
Same thing with the edges. If you want to go with a more vintage style. Street lights, I'm looking for a more vintage style.
I mean, I guess some of these questions will have to be answered once we decide what that design's gonna look. If we decide maybe, maybe it's going to be too expensive to do very, very fancy lines. It would change probably what the other things look like.
It would be, and plus feedback from the public, if it's gonna be a public hearing, they say, we want this or others.
Have you considered hiring a architectural design person to give you some drawings and looks?
Have you, have we thought about that, a landscaping type person?
I have talked to someone.
And how much?
Don't know, because I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to do it.
All it comes down to the cost, but they would certainly, if it's their specialty.
Percentage?
It probably would be. It would be, uh, whether it would be the whole project or just their part of it. Because there's some major items up here, they wouldn't have any electrical.
Right, I mean, certainly if they're going for, really, we're asking for their aesthetic input, I mean, they have nothing to do with the sidewalks or ramps or any of that.
Yes, yes.
Planters and poles and lighting and.
Yeah, yeah.
I could, if, if you want, if you want me to look into that, I, I will.
So what, what's the timeline, I mean, because next year we'll be doing the repaving and all that.
Well, the, the award letter, technically we got till April something, twenty twenty seven. But they will stand it because they know how long it takes to get the environmental.
So we're about two years away from this, or a year and a half from this.
Okay, we're not, we're, we still have to do what they call project report.
Yeah.
We've got the environmental clearance, we've got all these public meetings now, we have to put everything together and send it to IDOT. We've not actually been approved to do anything on this yet.
I'm just saying, basic timeline will be in a year and a half.
That could take those six months, ease.
So we could be two years out. So we've got some time, so when does the next meeting need to be? When do we need to start having some public input?
Anytime really, probably it'll be published in the paper. Um, anytime really, probably it'll be published in the paper, uh, couple of weeks ahead of time. So, you know, sometime in October.
And when, we will not have any ideas by that time probably.
Um.
About, I mean, the aesthetics and everything, we can have samples about what the thoughts are.
Right. Yeah, you know, just um, you know, what, what, what you think about like the stamped concrete, is that an option?
I think so, yes.
It is for many, we have a whole lot of materials in the papers.
Certainly, and replacing with paper. Yeah.
I, I think we have to consider it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Due to cost.
Now, when we go through and redo that, it'd be nice if we make sure we try to get everything fixed underneath that sidewalk and quickly tear it out.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have to go in and cut it. Cause I suppose it'll be difficult to match that back up once we cut it?
Be pretty tough.
I mean, cause I, I mean, we probably done, I don't know if we really want it to be.
Probably your pattern, but uh, color would be off because.
Color would be almost possible, I think.
I think we've got most of the stuff.
There is mannequins, there's um, the sign shop, ties in, that would cross the sidewalk. That's the only one we did.
How big is that?
I think it's eight. Hang on, person's tied on to it.
It's a question.
Are you connecting to the sign shop? Does it need to be eight inch? Could it be smaller? That's what I was about to ask, could we change it and get rid of it?
Just pull it. Yeah.
Tie, pass home to the, the destiny, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And basically peel it, bound would have to come out, or I mean, tie on. Down here, the sign shop.
That's probably already done, just get rid of it.
That, I don't know why it's, I don't know, I don't think it's built on top of it, yes.
So I wonder how soon can we get eyes on this storm sewer to figure out what needs to be done there?
On top of Jeff, can see if we can run a camera as far as we can, I don't.
Cause we think it may be able to be lined. Do we think that's a possibility?
We'll look at it.
But we're gonna need more manholes regardless, right?
Yeah, if they're gonna line it, there could be no way they'll.
Yeah, we're gonna register for the drift and line.
There is some things that go into it.
Yeah.
I'll look at it.
There's gotta be some ways around that, I think.
Um, benches, receptacles. You're looking more at vintage style?
I mean, I would think depending upon the light posts, what we decide on that.
You need to coordinate with that, yeah. I like the looks of the wood, but I don't think it would be durable in the long term.
It'd be maintenance problem.
It would be, I'd rather see either powder coated or they, don't they put a heavy vinyl coating on it? I mean, they put like, I don't think case it in vinyl, don't they?
They surely make a powder coated bench that would last for basically.
Twenty-five.
How many are we thinking? How many benches do we think?
Assuming there's a requirement for amount of benches, you got twenty-six.
Is there a requirement?
I, you know, not that, not that I'm aware of.
Twenty-six, that's a lot of benches.
It could might, yeah, more benches.
I think it's another aiming, but well, if you're the chamber, if you're looking at.
Okay, that could be.
I'd be curious what, if there is a requirement on those and what it, what is it?
Twenty-six maybe it's a cost of a different.
Maybe a few, yeah.
Par, nice. Try me if you gotta come, easy thing.
Yeah, you get on down.
That's a lot of benches.
Or an apple store.
It seems like.
I mean, people setting everything.
Little farm, you're, you're, if we have to bench, I'll go put some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-six and a half that many.
And my god, that would be several every block.
It would.
We definitely need to visit whether or not there's some kinda law.
I can't believe.
We live in Illinois, there's a law for everything. It's probably, there has to be a bench every this many feet in it.
Feet and.
Yeah, my grandma can only make it twenty-five feet. She needs to rest, so she needs.
I guarantee you, there's a bench.
There's something like that.
Hmm, interesting, okay. What else do we need to talk about on that? Well, let's try to see what we can figure out about that storm sewer, cause I mean, that's going to be nice to get those ADA ramps figured out with that before we, cause eventually it's gonna be refixed or something when we come down with it.
Do you wanna have another meeting like this before we get a public information?
Do we need to?
I don't think so. I'd like to do public things.
Yeah.
I'd like to know what some of this stuff costs.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if we can start getting some rough estimates on it.
I'm not too crazy on picking a light pole until I see what they all.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, we need to see a range of, these nicer poles are this, the medium range.
Yeah.
Well. Three years ago, what about like, four thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So like.
Fifty-five.
Probably more than that now.
I mean, if they're.
Most definitely.
Triple the cost, no, but double, it better be pretty nice, but hopefully they're just fifty, sixty, seventy percent premium.
No, this is.
Yeah, it's gonna come down to how much we can fit within a, money we have to work with.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you, you will be ready to have an informational meeting?
I think so. Can you do that by, in October?
Yeah, we have to get it published in the paper.
Okay.
Two meetings, one for the power park, a separate meeting.
So is this going to be a meeting meeting, or is this gonna be like our I-DOT meetings we need to have?
No, it's a public information meeting. It does, it does not have to be.
So you're where you can walk around and look at pictures and things, kinda like they did with I-DOT around fifty?
Right.
Even though we can't, basically, we can't touch it, so we can't touch it, so what, what's the meeting about?
It's, it, we just gotta.
You know, it's like, we have a meeting, but it's gonna stay just the same.
They say we brought it up and the general public, we're not gonna touch it. We're not gonna mess it.
Okay. Okay, okay.
At the, at the end of the day, he has to file in his report that we have.
We're not allowed to.
You had a meeting about the park, okay, yeah. It'll be no input other than, look, it's gonna remain the same.
Right.
Checking boxes.
We will have to keep minutes of this public information.
Yep.
Every comment. And I, I, I think we have to keep, get the names of people to make a comment.
So we'll have a sign in sheet and all that.
Probably.
And what the response is to the comment.
What are responses or?
If there is one.
What the response is. Same thing with what's, what's asked on the website. Any, any comment, any question, I keep track of it, we did it, you asked it, what the response is.
So where would you suggest we have this meeting?
Over here.
Okay, so you're gonna have things hanging up, or just from the table?
There, there will be, and be, be like that, might be on a table, be better probably.
Yeah.
I think that's what we did with, what was that, eleven, we had one, one piece of stuff on the tables.
In around fifty, they had it at the library, you could walk in one each section.
Yeah.
If we have to do storm sewer work, is that covered under the ground or is that our, okay, we can pick it up.
You can't drop a camera in a curb veteran and make it go.
Like I said, I just hate to hear.
I can get in and look both ways if we can get close enough to it.
Yeah, just asking them, you know, that's gotta feed in there somehow.
Yeah, it's just you worry about it falling off, cause a lot of them come in like midway, so if the camera rolls a little too far forward, you can't get it out, you have to dig it up. So we try and.
What about uh, yep. Inserting a, you know, PVC in there to give it a guide to, to me, try to make the camera go. I'm just asking, that's a long way between two access points.
I mean, like says, when we tried on Main Street, they just came in, but they, they stopped, you know, you couldn't get on the bottom, you, they were halfway up a tight.
Yeah, and then pull, yeah.
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 It doesn't work well with that game.
So I mean, I just guess.
Four inch bore hole out in the middle? I don't know what he's talking about.
No, it takes like an eight inch hole, an eight inch, it's like this long, I mean, it's not something small.
Oh, it's not just like a cable camera?
How much would it cost to put storm, to put manholes out here?
Um.
Of course, then the problem is gonna break into that.
We, you know, they, the contractor did.
Form it up and concrete it around.
And you'd have to be real careful.
Cause you could lose the whole storm sewer, I think, right?
Well, if, if it starts to go, then where's it gonna stop?
Maybe we better just leave it be.
But I mean, eventually it's gonna have to be done, is the problem.
Yeah, I mean, we'd need to look at, need to see what we find.
Although we can do.
And I just, I'd hate to get all this stuff done and then it go to hell and they're like, well, next week we have to fix this. Cause that'd be a waste of our money. Okay, well, let's try to figure that out too, if we can. And that's really the only, that's the main, that's the main uh, infrastructure problem we have. On what is that?
That and the water line.
Yeah, okay. All right, is that it? Anything, anything else on this portion?
No, I would like for him to look up how many benches we gotta have, how many waste receptacles we have to have.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think you're right, I want that to be.
Twenty-six seems fairly absorbent to me.
That's a lot. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
Do we even have that many blocks? I mean.
I mean, that'd be.
That'd be a bench, she'd see.
Yeah.
I think she was talking about, that, I mean, you're talking about replacing what we already had out there.
See if there are, those buildings are six feet long, right?
So, we're stopping at, we're not going to Morgan, which would include Hobie's Chili Willys, the library.
Oh, we're good. One, two, three, six.
I would also like to see how much it would cost us to go ahead and extend and do the same thing down to at least Morgan. Because I think that's kinda the heart of downtown. Would you agree with that?
Pardon?
Down to Morgan.
Morgan to.
Chili Willys.
Add one more block in, you've got Chili Willys, Hobie's, you've got the library on the other side. It'd just be nice if that was all kinda tied in, I think.
Chili and Hobie's. It would, yeah. We can't have a break.
It would look good.
We have a break because of the lot, you know, the old uh, high school and then the lot across the street, so it's kinda an actual break, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fine after that, yeah.
Well, that would have to be, that would have to be a separate.
No, I get it. But I mean, we would buy everything at the same time.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
So, so we can let that?
Right.
Cause we, you know, if we would change that, then they would basically start moving the environment.
No, no, I mean, this would just be something we do ancillary to this project, just to keep a design theme.
Mm-hmm.
Coincidentally matches what we, for the project.
Do we, that's, uh, do we own that parking lot that is across the way from Hobie's?
Yeah, that is Scott Four. That's Scott Four's parking lot building.
There appears to be no law on distance between benches, just clearances around benches.
Well, if there's twenty-six, there might not have been enough clearance around each one.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to kinda walk it and pick a number.
Well, and there'd be some blocks where it would be more important to have benches than others, I think. I mean, like, I'm not sure, I mean, yeah. All right, anything else? So we wanna get some estimates on pricing for different levels of poles, benches and trash cans.
Poles and benches.
Mm-hmm. Cans.
Figure out how many we really think we want.
Prices.
The whole bit, planters, trash cans, benches.
Concrete versus composite.
Yeah.
Anything for Mike?
Uh, yeah, well, at the end of the day, I'll basically just wanna know what everything costs.
Got some price estimates.
You gonna put banner brackets on the light poles or?
Take the banner.
Oh, yeah. People expect Christmas lights for sure.
Banner brackets or flag, ant flag and a wolf flag, flag.
Yeah, I would say proper flag brackets too.
I went through a town recently, I can't even remember, and they had, for the flags, they had a pole at the top and a pole at the, at the bottom of the flag. And so you could really see the flag and it was like, you know, that's pretty sharp, instead of just flapping away, you know, so you could actually see it.
It was like stressed.
Mm-hmm. I have no idea the cost, but.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, next item on the agenda is discussion with the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I just wanted to do this briefly for our new members. If they had any questions about the budget, see where we're at. So, just very briefly talk about where we're at, how things are going.
Well, in this packet that Mike sheet was on the top, I gave you a couple of things to look at there. The first two pages are all projects that we currently have going. Um, do you want me to go through each one of those marks or?
If they have any questions, you can. If you see anything that sticks out, I mean, you, I think, you know, what's most important, if there's anything that's really outstanding.
Um, yeah, storm sewer, that one's pretty much done, except we still owe money on that. We haven't got the final stuff there yet.
So briefly, where did that come in for budget with everything done? Were we pretty close?
Oh, yeah, I just got this last information from contract of the day.
So was it pretty close, you think?
Uh, I think we'll be under, but.
Yeah, probably be under.
Hmm, thank you.
The sanitary sewer relining beside the storm sewer, that's done, except we're having an issue with busy sewer sending us a bill. They won't send us our last bill between that project and the relining the sanitary sewer where we got the grant, we still owe them probably a half a million dollars, but they haven't sent us the final paperwork and bill.
Do we know why?
Think it has something to do with prevailing wage maybe?
I've sent emails, Jeff Vaughn's sent emails, have no idea.
Well, you'd think they would want that kinda money.
You'd wanna get paid, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
You would think.
Um, the next group, the next five is the stuff we're gonna do on Van Street next summer, repaving it, so resurfacing Route one thirty to Van. We have an estimate of three point three million. Gonna do the East Street intersection at three hundred thousand, replacing curb at six hundred thousand, resurfacing Van Street to Route fifty's eight hundred and ten thousand, unremoving and reconstructing the island out there by Route fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand. All of that money is scheduled to come out of the Business District Fund. Um, on the second page, we've got the STU project on North Avenue where we are resurfacing that and doing the water line replacement. The water line replacement's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand estimated. That comes out of our water reserves. And the resurfacing, we're using STU funds and we have a twenty percent match there. The rest of that, our match will come out of MFT funds also. Um, downtown main little enhancement, that's what we was talking about tonight. Um, our matching funds there will come out of Business District and then we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had set aside for part of that project also. Um, MFT, we've got the East Street Bridge project going, that's eight hundred and seventy-six thousand. Most of that is coming out of the grant, but there are, the rest of it will come out of the MFT funds.
Any word on that?
Yes.
Oh.
Some, um, I think, I think we're getting closer.
Okay.
Uh, the, the last response, that, uh, submit, the response to the cement that the power is sending was not just rejected. They wanted, they wanted a couple of changes. Uh, basically, they wanted to show where the crane's gonna send, stuff like that. I think, I think once they send this information, then it may satisfy.
So, that, this fall still?
My hope.
Now then, there's some asphalt to that, so what happens if we get to the part of the year where the asphalt plants shut down?
Uh, there's no asphalt on East Street.
Oh, there's not?
That's concrete.
Oh.
That's concrete.
Probably makes more sense, a lot of it weight goes over that. Okay, is Elliot Street done now?
No, they're in the same, same position, except they're gonna do the same thing for Elliot Street that they've done for East Street, same process, but at least now we know what they gotta do. CSX. They'll know what to send in first.
Okay. Okay, all right, bring it up.
And the next one is Elliot Street Bridge, estimating around four hundred thousand there, will come out of the General Fund. And then, um, they're planning on resurfacing the rest around one thirty next year, I believe, and doing those upgrades in the sidewalk. And that portion of that's supposed to cost us about two hundred and thirty thousand, and that will come out of MFT funds also.
So we've got, we've heard from, we, that's an estimate, you think?
That's an estimate. I think he said that they should know more about this fall and have an actual agreement with a hard estimate in there, that project.
Can you educate me on the, so, uh, they're gonna come through, resurface the road, but they're also gonna put in, in the sidewalk, how far?
From Parker to Walmart.
From Parker Street to Walmart.
Awesome, excellent. And then, and then, we're, we're funding part of that, or they're doing all of that?
Two hundred and thirty, so.
Two thirty thousand, yeah.
Cause we think that would have probably been a two million dollar sidewalk.
Oh, better.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, there's, there's a.
Two and two and a half, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
This all, uh, what was her name up at IDOT, Mike, who told us to do this? There was a limited IDOT told us to put in a strategic plan for sidewalks, and then when they came and resurfaced it, they would build a sidewalk. And so, that's what this is. They weren't going to do it, and then they decided they would.
Excellent.
When's that gonna be? We think, when do they, uh?
What's that?
When do you think they'll come through?
And do that work?
Hmm?
I think it's hopefully next year.
Yeah, I mean, cause, you know, up north, it's already done, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what stops.
So, will it be at the same time as the resurfacing? Very good.
Awesome.
And then at the bottom of page one, we still have one pending grant out there for the Walnut Street Reconstruction Rehabilitation for four point seven million. We haven't heard back from that grant yet. The next page is just a summary of our, um, tax receipts that we've got. If you look over in the middle columns, there's year-to-date, current year and year-to-date prior year. Corporate replacement tax, we're down there about twenty-three thousand, which we expected that, about forty-two thousand for the year compared to last year. Motor fuel tax is right about where we was the prior year. Sales tax were up a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but use tax were down ninety-seven thousand, so we're still up a little bit there. Business district tax, we're about thirteen thousand up from last year. Telecommunications tax, we're two thousand down, but that continues to drop every year. Hotel motel, we're about forty-five hundred dollars up from last year. Gaming, we're about thirteen thousand up from last year. Electric aggregation's going away, and the cannabis tax is about flat with last year.
So, the use tax, that came from, it was a, uh, per capita fund, it came from primarily online sales. Well, now then, it's paid to the location where those sales are made, so.
So, mom it is.
Do you, do you have a good handle on how much of that is in that increase?
We can't really tell, I mean, when I've looked and tried to figure out who wasn't reporting before, and now they are, it's probably about an extra thirteen to fifteen thousand a month. There is some, I think, special projects in there in the sales tax this year too, that's made that higher.
So, it isn't as bad as we thought it was going to be on the use tax?
I don't think so, I think we're getting probably.
Just about what we got.
Yep.
Hotel motel taxes, uh, immediately go into our tourist.
Tourist and funds.
Alright, any questions on revenue and anything?
The last page, you can just look at it if you have any questions. I just split out the general water and sewer there with revenue and expenses. I took out the grants and capital projects, so you can see where we're at compared to last year at the same time, or where we're at compared to the overall budget. If you have questions, you can come and ask me.
Any, any questions, thank you very much. I asked Justin to come and give us a brief rundown of where we're at with equipment, cause that is something that from time to time, we, uh, I mean, we always struggle with that every year during budget time, so. Can you tell me where we're at with equipment? I, what's the pressing needs? What is going to have to be replaced in the next three or four years? You can start, start with Street.
Uh, next, I think the next five-year plan, we had a street sweeper in the backhoe. And then the bucket truck is towards the end of that somewhere.
Okay, street sweepers are roughly how much?
Uh, currently, they're three ninety to four twenty, depending on what options you get.
And we have had that street sweeper since eleven?
Twenty-one. It's got about forty-five hundred hours on the actual artillery engine and five thousand engine hours on the truck.
How much might it be worth if we were to sell it sooner than later?
More.
Do you have any idea?
I don't really, I don't, I couldn't get a hard number without seeing it, they vary so much, but I feel like they, I feel like it's between seventy-five and seventy-five. Maybe a hundred thousand, wait six.
Nope, yeah.
That's not something that's currently budgeted, no.
Nope.
But it could be, but it could be next year.
Twenty-eight.
Okay.
I, I just think that that might be something important to think about, is if we can get seventy-five or a hundred thousand, might be worth doing it instead of waiting until it's worth ten.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we've already had to rework the actual pickup head, rebuild a lot of stuff on that, replace the van and main bearings on that, so. It's just the bigger ticket stuff to start and come, so.
Alright, and you said backhoe?
Yeah, say we have a two thousand and ten case that would be when we roll out, it's pushing ten thousand hours.
Seems like it's real close. Cause we skipped a couple of years, we didn't buy it. We tried to do it, we tried to keep it for twenty years, so every ten, our first out, backhoe only gets about ten years and then goes to the second, so it doesn't get used as much. The last ten, and we skipped a few years not getting a new one, so.
You said ten thousand hours?
Yeah.
Just shy of.
I'm a little gunny on a backhoe after it's gone six thousand hours.
That's how long we keep, twenty years.
Okay, you have a good mechanic.
To get it worked in.
Okay, is there a budget line item for backhoe?
It should be on our five-year plan, there's nothing obviously this year.
Nothing this year, okay.
Like one forty.
What, what equipment is in this year's budget that we have?
I think he has some kind of truck, I don't know.
I have a, a used, like, ton and a half, F-five-fifty, ton and a half truck and a salt spreader, but if I don't get a truck, I don't have a salt spreader.
Yeah.
So, that's about it, it's pretty clean?
Yes.
And then you said a bucket truck, so the bucket truck, tell us about it.
It's a ninety-seven International, so it's around a lot, which I don't think we bought that.
It was used.
It was used.
So, that was going to be my question, is there used bucket trucks out there that we could purchase?
Yeah, I just think on that deal, we're gonna just have to be like, we found one one year. Like, trying to budget a bucket truck is gonna be very difficult, saying this year, we're gonna buy a used bucket truck, cause they're far and in between and we have to have them inspected, they have to meet certain criteria for us. So, it's gonna be one of those deals, whenever we, if we budget seventy-five thousand, realize that that year, we may not find one. Is it hard to find?
Sixty-five foot, did I have what we need?
It'll probably be sixty foot, ours is fifty-four, it's sixties.
I think we need sixty, sixty-five or some.
But we need a double bucket, certain things we do up in the air, we need two guys, whether we're working on these lights and stuff like that.
So, I wonder if in the future, we could have some type of equipment contingency, to where if we did find a good deal, be like, well, that's too good of a deal, it'll pass up and it's gonna save us money in the long run.
So, you need sixty-five foot, double bucket.
We did have that money we're setting aside for.
Sixty. We only, yeah, sixty's more like a special. You get much over sixty, it's more of a specialty. You go up to seventy, like the tree trim, and some of the tree trimming buckets are like seventy, but they're hard to get.
I mean, and that's something you use quite a bit. At what point will it get out of inspection to where you can't get it back yet?
Yeah, if they don't pass electric test or have major issues, that'll wait, that'll cut the prices of the truck.
That's kinda like what I'm with the old circle, right?
Is that a conductivity test? Is that what the electrical test is?
Yeah, yeah, since they're working around electrical lines. That's inspected, tested every year.
They reworked the boom. Ten years, seven years?
Yeah, yeah.
Seven, ten years, they went, the whole boom got all reworked and everything.
Those hoses are very pricey.
Just the whole, yeah, whole thing, the things, it's not just cheap.
So, we think, how much do we think a ninety-seven, or a ninety-seven is worth? Ten thousand, fifteen?
Fifteen.
And you think a new one would be seventy-five, a hundred?
Used one.
I mean, a used, a new one for us?
Yeah, man, that's a big, getting in the range of a good clean one.
Anything else in Street? Water?
Uh, Brandon needs a leak truck.
You need a leak truck?
Yeah. No, like Tyler's need a fifty-five hundred and Brandon needs one. The leak truck he's using now is just good enough to get him up there and back, he can't pull nothing with it. It's not, it's not heavy enough for the back trailer when it's loading. So, it's, I think on his end, it'd be handier to have a sep, another truck to do it with, the leak truck, but now he's, he can drive it up there with a dump truck.
Dump truck.
Pull it, and then you gotta have another dump truck, and start digging, just, he makes a lot of trips.
Inefficient.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, very. Cause the truck he's using is a nine-four, I think, that's three fifty, and it's, it ain't gonna hold.
No more pull itself. Okay. Sewer department?
There's just pretty good.
Okay. Fire department?
Uh, I think Darren's one ninety, ladder.
Yeah.
With a pump?
Yeah. But to get into details on that, you bear with us.
Okay. So, but otherwise, other than that, we've got a snorkel, but it doesn't have a pump, so it has to have a pumper, go with it. It, it's not self-sufficient and it's kinda big, so they would like to get a ladder truck.
Yeah.
That's going to be incredibly.
And that was big money, it was over two million, over two million? It was, it was a big number, two-six?
Yeah, I think he's been finding good, clean, used ones for six fifty, seven hundred.
Oh, wow, that sounds, I'm okay with good, clean, used, yeah.
It's the outfitting though, right? That jacks up the price, is, is it the outfitting though, that jacks up the price a lot?
Yeah.
I feel like that's what he said.
They're all off to a little different first, I respect that, but I think he's found them in range.
We're kinda buying time, because he said as soon as it wasn't passed inspection, then it's not gonna be able to use it, it's still passing.
Well, and that's what happened with the old snorkel, it, the turntable, it wouldn't turn past enough.
Right.
Um, and it's one of those things that we don't use all the time, but man, we have to have it.
When you need it, you need it.
So, I think the next closest one's maybe Effing Hill?
Yeah.
So.
Vincent's, Vincent's, uh, no, Lawrenceville has one. Well, the floors may just be a squirt, I don't know if it's natural there.
I think, they, they, they use recent, they didn't used to have them that close around, did they?
Uh, yeah, Vincent's, or not, Lawrenceville just got one, I think.
Okay, so, does Robinson have one? With the refinery? I think they have their refinery department.
They have everything.
Fires.
Um, anything else, fire department? Police department?
Yeah, I think they're due for another new car.
What, what's budgeted this year?
Fifty-five thousand, I believe in there.
We've gotten out of, about, we're off track of getting a new one every year, starting to see a lot of miles get wrecked. I think total, there's five line cars that run every, like, just on the line that they can drive whenever they need patrol cars. So, there's three of them that are under a hundred thousand there, four. But out of the whole thirteen in the police department, there's five that are under a hundred thousand miles. So, we're getting.
Getting, getting out of whack?
Yeah, I'm.
Getting into that.
So, what did we budget for this year? What, is it a squad car, is it a?
I think we're getting, have one budgeted for the detective, cause that one has thirteen with a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles. It's getting pretty rough.
Have we found, have we found anything?
I think Loomer's found some, and Alan said he's been looking.
Have we found anything?
I've found a used one, yeah, I've found some used ones, we're looking at.
What's the option? Where are we looking?
I think, like, Loomer said, he's been talking with the same people at the county, he's getting those from.
Who's the county buy-off of?
It's, uh, Chicago Motors. Um, basically, they do, they buy leased vehicles, um, it's not like, it's a pan land business based out of Chicago, but they buy kinda nationwide used squad cars. Um, the sheriff's department was turned on to that by their insurance company, and they've got a few, they've got online.
Good luck.
How long have we been looking?
How long have we been looking?
Yeah.
Um, probably started back in May, somewhere in there.
Kinda curious, I mean, if you got a line item in for your budget, to spend sixty-five thousand on a detective car.
It's fifty-five.
How much?
Fifty-five.
Okay, that, that means last year's council said, yep, go spend up to fifty-five thousand on a police car. I guess I can't wrap my head around why that isn't happening.
Available, I think, availability.
Okay.
So, but I mean, do, are there some up at the Chicago Motors place?
Used, yes.
I mean, are we buying new? What was the plan?
So, originally, what we was doing on our budget, um, we looked about getting one new, one used. Um, it didn't work out for the new, because we had to make cuts. Um, so again, the detective can be in either, whether they're used or new. Um, while he's, you know, uses a detective car, you know, daily, it's not that it's online going, you know, twenty-four seven. So, basically, it's signed to him, he's gonna use it for like the drone, the, uh, crime scene investigation, things like that, that he does.
So, I mean, I guess, uh, the, uh, intent is to buy a used one then, is that what I hear?
That's what's in the plan, I think.
Okay.
Last year, the new one cost us about fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah, I guess we're looking at, what are we, are we looking at SUV or something with more room, you said?
Yeah, SUV.
Cars are getting a lot more expensive, aren't they?
Um, so, so, and then we, that's the only squad cars we're buying this year, so we might need to get.
The one.
Yeah.
The one, right?
That's what I meant. So, I mean, next year, we probably need to think seriously about getting two possibly.
Last one we got, it'll take, how long did it take to get it cheap? Several months.
It took a long time, so, whenever, cause, uh, we had issues, uh, Justin and I kind of worked on it, but. Um, it didn't get out promptly, then I had huge, major camera issues. Um, so basically, the camera, uh, company that we have all of our body cams, anti-car cameras, um, they were going through some trials, whether they were selling, they weren't selling, they froze all their orders. So, they were literally about fourteen, four months behind. Um, that turned into close to six, they assured me that that's all basically taken care of now and it's starting to go smooth. I am starting to get body cams, whenever I have issues, I send them in, they send it back, it's more prompt. Um, what they told me was they're gonna stock up on the anti-car cameras that way. It'd be like the good old days where I call, we order, you know, we get it within a few weeks. So, that, that was major holdup was getting the squad car and then ultimately getting the camera system installed.
Okay, so I guess we need to get on that car for roach, I guess. We can find one, I mean, if you guys find one you like, I don't know why you don't bring it back to the council.
I've talked to Eagles, haven't talked to a lot of dealerships around, that dealers have.
Okay, well, let's, I would say we'll hop right on that, try to get it done sooner than later, in my opinion, wouldn't it be yours?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if it's in the budget, let's make a decision and keep rolling here.
They're aware of it.
Uh, anything else in the comments?
I got one question. I couldn't really hear what you said. Is there a reason that street, uh, leak truck and the F-five-fifty with the salt spreader on it can't be the same vehicle?
I don't know if he wants, you want a dump bed or you want a flat bed? I wanna dump bed.
Yeah.
Oh, and you wanna flat bed?
Uh, maybe, I don't know.
Would you be okay with a dump bed?
Maybe.
Maybe, I don't know.
My biggest deal is I have, when I put my salt spreader on it snowing, I have to have that truck to spread salt.
I got you, okay.
He needs a leak.
Yeah.
We, we get in that pickle whenever it snows and he has a leak, I end up having to pull a couple of trucks off of plowing snow to go work on his leak.
Okay.
So, sometimes we get into a pickle.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Snowing and the blower leaks.
Right.
Maybe a flat bed.
Alright.
But if we could make it work out sometime, I'm all for it if we had to, but I, my biggest deal is when we gotta spread salt, I can't take the salt spreader out. We need to go fix the leak, put the salt spreader back in.
We'll get an outfitted trailer for you to use on leaks, that it just sitting there, hook on it, take off, go to the leak.
What you want, we usually take it back.
Oh, okay.
That's gonna get, get the truck to the back, take it and withhold it back.
Backhoe, yeah.
Have everything on. Cause anything we do anymore, we gotta back to.
Right. Oh, heck, yeah.
So, I'd buy, need something just.
Dedicated for that, okay.
Any other questions on the budget? You guys have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay, go ahead. I would accept a motion to enter into closed session to discuss the sale or lease price of real property, yeah, real property and the acquisition.